Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hereby call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Harrisonville to order. Would you kindly stand with me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Present.
Alderman Miller?
Present.
Alderman Turner?
Present.
Alderman Milner?
Present.
Alderman Dickerson?
Here.
Alderman Reese?
Present.
Alderman Davidson?
Present.
Alderman Bachman?
Absent.
Mayor Bowman?
Present. Thank you.
We do have a forum, and we do have some celebratory matters to deal with tonight. So I'm going to start with a proclamation. You know, the 2020 census is just about upon us, and it's a very important count. So I'm going to do a proclamation just addressing the importance of that. Whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being by helping planners determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, and public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and achieving an accurate and complete count of the nation's growing and changing population. Whereas, more than $400 billion per year in federal and state funding is allocated to states and communities based in part on census data. Whereas, census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives and is often used for the redistricting of state legislatures, county and city councils, and voting districts. Whereas, the 2020 census creates jobs that stimulate economic growth and increase employment. Whereas, the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law under Title 13 of the U.S. Code. Now therefore, we proclaim that the City of Harrisonville, Missouri is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in 2020. As a 2020 census partner, we will support the goals of the 2020 census, encourage people in our community to participate to ensure a full and accurate census, and create opportunities to raise awareness of the 2020 census. Done and ordered this second day of December 2019. Mayor Judy Bowman. We have some staff I know that have been working diligently on promoting participation in the census. I know, I believe, you've been involved. Chris Arthur has been involved. Randy, you've probably been involved too. So thank you for working toward a very important goal. Okay, so that's the census. Now I want to move on to a presentation. I want to ask Alderman Reese to join me down here on the floor. Alderman Reese and I are both members of the Caldeans Women Group and have been for a number of years. And we have three of those ladies here with us this evening. I'm going to invite you all to come to the front. They have a presentation to make to the city for the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. So I'm going to pass the microphone to our President, Jeanette Bartles.
We do have a contribution to the city for the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. Plus, last week, we gave a contribution to the animal shelter. So we are spreading our wealth around. And we're happy to present this to you. Wonderful. So may I open it? Yes. Wonderful. This is a check for $100 to the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. So do you have your camera?
Yes.
You know, the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund is a fund that is prescribed to assist people who need assistance with their utility bills. So we have the Christmas tree lighting that's coming up Saturday on the square. I would certainly invite all of you in the audience to join us for that. So let me put the microphone down before you take a picture. But thank you, ladies, on behalf of the city and of her residents. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you for being a member of that. Miss Peggy. So go ahead and introduce yourselves to the audience. I'm Jeanette Bartles.
And I'm Betty Catherine. I'm treasurer for the group.
I'm Judy Reese. Peggy Clum, been here before, back in the '70s.
Yes, she's a former older woman. It's actually Peggy was the one who invited me to join this group. So I really appreciate that. Okay, thank you, ladies. Let's go ahead and just do this. Yeah. That'll be fine. That'll be fine. Thank you.
One, two, three.
And thank you again. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board of Aldermen this evening? If so, please make your way to the microphone. And if you would state your name and address into the microphone for the clerk. Thank you.
I'm Larry Strach. I live at eight-town North Patton Street in Harrisonville, Missouri. My presentation tonight is followed with some questions I sent to the Board of Aldermen. And I haven't got a response. And I know tonight you're voting on the electric utility rate increase on the agenda. So I'll read the email that I sent. The South Cass Tribune article on budget meeting introduced a lively discussion stated, and I quote, "But it was also noted Harrisonville's electric rates were among the lowest in the area and only Archie has a lower sewer rate," unquote. And that was part of Harrisonville website here. Harrisonville has the highest commercial and residential rates of any of the neighboring communities in the area. If the data analysis from www-electriccitylocal.com/states/missouri is incorrect, provide corrected data. I have attached a copy of an Excel spreadsheet that listed data from the website for the communities around Harrisonville. The electric rate top recommendation, utility rates, general updates, and discussion also has some very questionable figures that need justification. The IFE rating, revenues, electric sales, and also the other incomes for years 2019 to 2026 seem erroneous in the top recommendations. The top recommendations show the electric sales dropped $779,682 from years 2018 to year 2019, and the other income drops $266,439 from year 2018 to year 2019. The electric sales for years 2015 was $11,580,130, and for year 2016 was $11,376,806 per Harrisonville website. And I listed the two websites, and if somebody wants that, I can give that information to them. The operating revenues is indicated as $12,885,340 in the electric fund budget summer sheets under the 2019 proposed budget on Harrisonville website, 2019 budget. The top recommendations only show $11,428,595 for total operating revenues under budget 2019. This had a difference of $1,456,745, where did the raw recommendation get, the $11,428, $595 figure. This historical data that I see does not justify the significant lower figures used for years 2019 to 2026. Even with the rate increase used in the electric rate top recommendations, electric sales, other incomes, and total operating revenues never reached those of the historic 2018 year. The other figures in the study also need to be reviewed, determined to be reasonable by city staff, and revised if determined to be unreasonable. It was indicated during the October 21 Board of Aldermen meeting that the rebates for overcharges on Harrisonville electric bills were being processed and repair on utility bills that were being made. As the city come up with a method to get overcharges returned to people who no longer had residence here, at the meeting, the city indicated they did not have a method to get the refunds to people who had moved and were reluctant to do so. The U.S. Postal Service will forward first-class mail to a person's new address for up to 12 months after a change of address is registered. For phone call to city, I was told refunds for overpayments would be based on winter electric bills since they were higher than summer electric bills. I disagreed and said many people have higher electric bills in the summer due to AC and reduced bills in the winter since gas is used for heating. I was then told the software would not handle going back to give refunds.
Mr. Strach. Mr. Strach. It's four minutes, and you're well past that already. So if you could please wrap it up. Thank you.
To people who had moved and that new residents would receive refunds, the city apparently still did not have a handle on problem or fair way to return overcharges to people that were overcharged.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board of Aldermen this evening? If so, please make your way to the podium. Seeing no one, I will close public participation. And at this point, I would ask you to please mute or silence all cell phones. And we'll move on to the approval of minutes. First up is the approval of the minutes from the Board of Aldermen Work Session, November 18.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting, November 18, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The minutes of the special meeting, November 21, Board of Aldermen Special Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The minutes of the special meeting from November 22, the Board of Aldermen.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen Work Session, November 25.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. A motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The executive session from November 21, a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. A motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. And then finally, the minutes from the executive session, November 22.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'll take a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. This board has been busy. Look at all of these meetings. All right, moving on to the agenda items. Number one is the appointment of planning and zoning. Mr. Fowen.
We have a vacancy on the planning and zoning board due to the resignation of Jim Proctor, who asked to be replaced. We value his service, and we are, Mayor Bowman is recommending the appointment of Wilbert Crawford to take the rest of Jim Proctor's term on the board.
And Mr. Crawford is in the audience. If you want to just go ahead and let everyone see you, that's great. Actually, Mr. Crawford and Mr. Proctor are friends, I believe. So I think Mr. Proctor is pleased to vacate his chair to Mr. Crawford. All in favor of that appointment of Mr. Crawford to planning and zoning?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Welcome, Wilbert. We look forward to you working with us on planning and zoning. Thank you for your service. All right, a public hearing. Mr. Crowe.
Mayor, members of the Board of Aldermen. This application is for a 10-year special use permit. It comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a unanimous recommendation of approval. The applicants who are here in the audience, Sandra and Graham Gentry with Aqua Fresh Bear Mundi LLC, are asking for the special use permit to commercially raise bear mundi fish for grocery stores, restaurants, and then also to hydroponic farming, bringing vegetables and vegetables and herbs, and then also to have attendance quarters where somebody can be 24 hours in case something happens with the fish operation. The Grams have purchased, let me fire up the highlighter here, or the pointer. The Grams have purchased this 12-acre tract. Grams have purchased this 12-acre tract right here, which is between I-49, Burkhardt Drive, north of Sapp Brothers, and MVP Industrial Hain. This side, on the west side of Burkhardt, is unincorporated Cass County. County Planning Office informs me that that side is zoned for industrial. This tract to the north and this tract to the south, which are in the city limits, are also zoned industrial, light industrial, with the M1 zoning district. This is the site plan of the 12 acres. Let me first point out that, highlight it here. Let me first point out that this three-quarter acre piece up in the southwest corner of the tract is a, is proposed for a distribution, automotive distribution distributor operation for BOSS Air Suspension, which I understand is an Australian company that will be locating here. It is not part of this special use permit. If the applicant is successful in obtaining a special use permit this evening, then Troy Bowers will be bringing in a preliminary and a final plat in January for us to consider in February. And it will be separating out the 12 acres into this three-quarter acre tract, and then the, and then the remaining 11, 11 and a quarter acre tract for the hydroponic farming and the raising of the bear mundi fish. The bear mundi fish are an Australian sea bass. They would ship the fingerlings here from Australia. They would be raised here and then sold for market. Right here in a shaded, it would be the first phase of the operation. It'd be about 75, 7900 square foot building. It would be for the raising, primarily for the raising of the bear mundi. The building can be expanded two more times for a total of 26,000 square feet as the Below the buildings for the fish are the, are two, each 30,000 square feet, 60,000 square feet total greenhouses for the hydroponic planting, hydroponic farming. The applicants have also advised us, and they want to make sure that the Planning Commission and you all understand that if the state legalizes industrial, the growing of industrial hemp, which the Department of Agriculture informs me that they're finishing up their rulemaking comment period right now, they hope to finalize their administrative rules for the raising of industrial hemp sometime in the first of the year, and then start issuing permits for people to start raising it, that if the state approves it, which sounds like it's going to happen, and then after we would possibly make whatever changes we need to make to our regulations, that they would be coming back and asking for whatever permits they need from us and the state to raise industrial hemp. If that's not part of this operation, and for some reason they would never get approval to do the industrial hemp, they still want to move forward with the primary part of their business, which is the indoor farming and the raising of the fish. Over here is a, they would build a dam, create a pond, a pond with a statue of a bear mundi 15-foot bear mundi fish in it, live in, and that would, this would also be their detention area. And at the time that the plats would come in, the size of this pond would be determined by the stormwater management report, which they would have to file. The only, the apartment, the apartment would have, there's no sewers right now in this area. The apartment would be sewage to be taken care of by a septic, a regular septic system. But all of the waste and sewage from the, from the fish operation would have to, and the applicants were just advised of this today by the Department of Agriculture, or Department of Natural Resources, that any of their waste from the raising of the fish would need to go into a holding tank and pumped and then, and then removed from the Here is a mock-up, conceptual plans of the first phase of the building, which would be for the fish and the attendance quarters. There's a picture of a bear mundi fish. There's another one with Chris Dial at our lake at the park when he had hair, was a little thinner, holding, holding a fish from our lake. Here's the hydroponic greenhouses. This is a fish, indoor fish raising operation that I visited in, outside of Higginsville. I can't remember what kind of fish they were growing, tilapia?
It was lodge mouse bass.
Lodge mouse bass, that's right. But I had not been in an operation like this and wanted to see it firsthand. This was the building that it was in. The farmer was raising cattle and crops all around it, and here was another product, which was his, which was his bass. Here's what the inside looked like. These are the tanks for the fish. Of course, this operation would be much newer, but that's kind of what goes on inside. The staff report has the workup justifying the special use permit. It's a 10-year special use permit. The applicant can come back at the end of the 10 years and seek renewal. The conditions in the ordinance include the usual performance conditions that are in the M1 zoning district, which is at the property line. Noise can't be above 75 dBA. There can't be noticeable odors, dust, or vibration, and those are included in the ordinance. This comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval. It is a planning, or a public hearing item. I think Graham would probably like to make a few comments, and then I guess we can open up there for public comments.
Mr. Gentry, you want to step forward?
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Mr. Crowe had referred to, from the fisher, the tank, that the waste is, is removed from the tank.
Yep.
Number one question is, how do they remove that waste? And number two is, where does the waste go from that point?
City sewer system.
Okay.
So one day, hopefully, when the sewer line goes through the road, we'll pipe it straight to the city sewer line. At the moment, we'll have to have it in the holding tank. If it was, you know, a native species of Missouri, you know, we could have it in the field and in the yard. But because they're imported species, we'll have to pump it to the city sewer.
Thank you.
You said it stays in the holding tank. So where from the holding tank does it go? Because there's no sewer there right now. You've got septic, so where does it go from there?
You know, you have a sewage pumping truck. So when you have a city sewer line that needs to pump the septic tank out, the same truck would pump this tank out.
Okay.
And take it to the city sewer.
Okay. So it will be taken to the city sewer, just by truck?
By truck.
Also, the indoor hydroponic farm or the greenhouse?
Yes.
Is that specifically being constructed for hemp? Or is there, if you don't get the permit for hemp, are you going to use it for something else?
Specifically constructed for high-end vegetables and herbs and edible flowers for the high-end restaurants. Sea bass, the easiest way to explain it is you've got salmon, you've got sea bass, and you've got catfish and tilapia. So sea bass is a high-end fish. You know, you can grow it in several different sizes. Eight months old, they're, you know, .8 of a pound for a pound plate size. You know, four months later, they're two and a half pounds, another four months, they're three and a half pounds. The more age they've got, 18 months of growth, the more taste they have, the more flavor they've got in the high-end restaurants. That's what they're looking for. So our customer isn't really, you know, the warm-ups. It's more the high-end restaurants. So when we get a relationship with high-end restaurants, that's why it's stage one and stage two before it's stage three, which is the greenhouse. That's where we'll establish, you know, the market of what we're going to grow. I did my training with organics, so there's no pesticides. So it's a screened, filtered greenhouse. So we'll put beneficial bakes to counteract any, you know, bakes that they have in there. So that's what we're trying to do. With the hemp, the whole reason for the hemp is, you know, is to be a processing, a temporary processing facility for a hemp business. It's processing the seed and the protein powder, not marijuana. We may do CBD, may do, but our main thing is vegetables and high-end herbs and things like that.
The only other question I had is, so did the hemp part of this get added prior to planning and zoning or after planning and zoning had approved?
During.
During?
From the very beginning.
So they knew it in that meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I just didn't remember that part.
From the first, yeah. From the first day, excuse me, from the first day Graham walked into our office, and then is it the staff report for the planning?
Okay. I just thought the way you said that earlier, maybe it came in, came about after. So I was just curious.
Any other questions for Mr. Gentry? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this proposed project for us?
I have a question. How many acres of hemp would you have on this property once you were able to grow hemp?
No acres at all. We've put our hands up that we help a friend, which would financially involve in the business to be a processing facility for a temporary period till they establish their market and the size where they want to go. Then they'll be building close by in their own facility. So, and the reason we're doing that is that when we bring the fish from Australia, they need very small, and it's going to take a while to fill that building up. So we have a huge amount of floor space that's basically empty, you know, till we grow into it. So two, three years, they'll be gone. Processing the seed for oil and the, and the seed cake for protein powder. It's not for, not for growing the hemp, industrial hemp.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I think I heard this morning that you were going to grow it on the site, but that's not the case.
The site next door, the twenty acres next door.
Okay.
Yeah, not going, honestly. And with, with the, we've been asked, you know, will be considered doing CBD hemp in the aquatics? You know, will be considered, and I said, we'll consider it. We didn't say we'd do it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
So for clarification from the members of the board and people in the audience, I can't see him from the monitor, but speaking was Brian Pulliam, who is here representing the South Cast Tribune. A lot of you know that Mr. Minnick is out ill, and so Brian is here in his place, so that's, that's who that was that was speaking. Anyone else wishes to participate in the public hearing on this particular barramundi project? If not, I'll close the public hearing and we'll go on to Council Bill 76.
Council 76 is in ordinance of the city of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, granting a ten-year special use permit to Graham and Sandra Gentry and Aquafish Barramundi LLC to operate an indoor aquatic farm to raise fish in attendance living quarters and an indoor hydroponic farm at 4241 Burkhardt Drive in the city of Harrisville, Missouri. First reading Council Bill 076.
Thank you. Discussion board?
I make motion that we suspend the rules and move Council 76 to a second reading.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Turner and a second from Alderman Miller to suspend the rule on Council Bill 72 and advance it to its second reading. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Prove.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you, second reading.
Council Bill 076 is in ordinance of the city of Harrisville, Cass County, Missouri, granting a ten-year special use permit to Graham and Sandra Gentry and Aquafresh Barramundi LLC to operate an indoor aquatic culture farm to raise fish with an attending living quarters and an indoor hydroponic farm at 4241 Burkhardt Drive in the city of Harrisville, Missouri. Seven, Council 076.
Thank you, roll call again.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you, Council Bill 76 is approved and becomes ordinance number 3481. Council Bill 77.
Council 77 is in ordinance amending the operating budget of the city of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. First reading Council 077.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Presented this evening is the amendment to 2019 budget. And so I presented to you, the primary purpose for this amendment is for the outdoor pool, the aquatic center, Fund 13. This year, the weather was not as cooperative as it was last year, we didn't do as well as bringing in revenues, and the, the labor costs were higher than anticipated for that. And so it's presented to you this evening and asking the general fund make a transfer in the amount of thirty-five thousand, to thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars to make that fund whole again. There is sufficient funds in the operations for general fund to make this transfer, and in addition to that is emergency services did not use all of the budget to transfer that was allotted in the 2019 budget either from general fund. So between those two, there's sufficient monies to not need a formal amendment to general fund because that's done as a, as a fund that's whole, it's not done by law item. Questions, comments? Mr. Director Deal's here for questions as well?
Orso?
Yes, sir.
The difference between the twenty thousand three fifty and the thirty-one thousand three fifty was?
It's, it nets itself out, you know, so the thirty-one thousand nine fifty is the total amount of cash transfer to make the fund to come back to whole. Okay, so the thirty-one thousand dollars is, offsets the negatives because the revenue didn't come in, you know, so the sixty-seven hundred and the four thousand dollars and the nine hundred dollars reduces the revenues. So you have to make up that difference.
Oh, I got you, nevermind.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. McCoy?
To approve? Motion to move to the second reading.
Oh, second.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion from Alderman Miller with a second from Alderman Davidson to advance Council Bill 77 to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you, second reading.
Council 77 is in ordinance amending the operating budget for the city of Harrisville, Missouri for the fiscal year January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. Seconding Council 077.
Roll call again.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you, Council Bill 77 is approved and becomes ordinance number 3482. Council Bill 72.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to move to amend Council Bill 72. Motion on the floor is so written, move to amend to the rates that were discussed last Monday night, special session. Electric rate increase, base rate only on residential will increase from four dollars twenty-seven cents to five twenty-five. That's an increase of ninety-eight cents per month. Commercial rate is currently eight fifty-four. It will increase by one dollar ninety-six cents a month to a total of ten fifty. And combined light and power service currently is twenty-five sixty-two a month, will increase by five point eighty-nine cents to a total of thirty-one fifty per month.
I have a motion to amend this particular ordinance as it pertains to the electric rates.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Alderman Miller to amend and a second from Alderman Milner to support the amendment for Council Bill 72.
Will you amend it? I will, I will. Okay, included in that amendment, there will be a two percent increase in the year 2021, correct? Yes, I'm sorry, I was thinking 2020.
So there were clear on the proposed amendment?
Yes.
And we have a motion and a second. And that's a roll call.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Nay.
Second reading if you're ready.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, second reading of Council Bill 72 is in ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Harrisville as follows, Chapter 700, Section 700.530, by establishing new rates for municipal electric services, second reading of Council Bill 072 as amended.
Roll call.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nay.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Nay.
And Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you. Council Bill 72 becomes ordinance number 3483. Moving on to Council Bill 73.
Mayor, if I may, I would, in reference to Council Bill 73, move to amend the motion on the floor is so written. Again, this was discussion last Monday night in our work session. Sewer rates will increase, commercial residential is the same amount. Currently, the rate is ten forty-five per month. It will increase to sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents per month on the first one thousand gallons. The cha, the charge on the after one thousand, excess one thousand, changes from currently sixty-eight cents per one hundred to ninety-one cents per one hundred. And also, there will be an increase on that as well, beginning in 2021 of three percent.
I have a motion to amend. Go ahead.
Second.
Who was the first? Okay, Alderman Miller. Alderman Miller is the mo, is the first motion, was seconded by Alderman Davidson. Roll call to approve the amendment.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nay.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Nay.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
And Alderman Bachman, absent.
Okay, so that amendment passes, now can we have a second reading?
Council 73 is in ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the city of Harrisville, Missouri as follows, Chapter 700, Section 700.460, by establishing new rates for municipal sewer services, second reading of Council 073 as amended.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nay.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Nay.
And Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you, Council Bill 73 is approved and becomes ordinance 3484. Council Bill 74, counselor?
Council 74 is a second reading, I'm in ordinance adopting an operating budget of the city of Harrisville, Missouri in fiscal year January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, second reading of Council 074. Oh, if you'd like it now or I can do it later, the, at the work session, the board expressed its desire to have an expression of intent about the economic development director position, so I prepared that, I'm circulating it. My recommendation is that if this is what the board had in mind, that after voting on the pending ordinance, then motion be made for this expression of intent and that it would be right in the minutes, right after the approval of the budget.
One thing I see on this is, we discussed that this position would not be filled any earlier than July 1.
I think I said June and you said okay. But those, those funds, I don't care, it's either July or next month.
So I'm just looking for a second, second.
My thought would be, Mayor, is if we, we have an ordinance pending, we can vote on that, I'll then, I can put this expression of intent in the form of a motion and it could be adopted then right after, so that the minutes are consecutive then.
Okay, that works. All right, so we'll move on to second reading then of Council Bill 74.
And we have that, so now I think you just need to.
I will call.
Yes.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dora?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nay.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent.
Thank you, counselor.
Yes, and then I would request that someone adopt a motion for the expression of intent to the Board of Alderman. It's the intent of the Board of Alderman that the position of economic development director as specified in the newly passed city budget should not be filled until after July 1, 2020. The to-be-hired city administrator shall have the discretion to make that employment decision after evaluating the status of city operations, current employees, and the goals of the Board of Alderman, directed this second day of December 2019.
So I make that motion.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, so we'll insert the statement then that it's the intent of the Board of Alderman that the position of economic development director as specified in the newly passed city budget should not be filled immediately, should not be filled before July 2020. Rather, the to-be-hired city administrator shall have the discretion to make that employment decision after evaluating the status of city operations and current employees and the goals of the Board of Alderman. I might want to go back to Council Bill 74 and just identify it as ordinance number 3485. Thank you. I think we're caught up now, and so we'll move on to Council Bill 47.
Madam Mayor, I have asked for this matter to be brought back to the board based upon the status of where we were at. Following that, presentate, that request, I notified Harrisville Villas that this, that this matter might come back to the board for a vote. They promptly sent then a settlement proposal, which I'm distributing to you. The little cover sheet on the top is mine. The letter attached is from their counsel. I, to save time, I summarized their points, but if you look on the second page of their letter, you'll see where it says compromise proposal. It would be my request that the board, again, table Council Bill 47 to, and give me some direction on what the board might be interested in in responding to this proposal. There are some things that they've requested, I just don't think that the city can do, but there are other things that they've asked for that, at least in part, from what I've heard from the Count, the Board of Alderman say before, would be something that you might consider, and so I'm looking for some direction on how to respond to this request. There, Mr. and Mrs. Hart, the developers, were not available to come tonight, and their counsel is in Springfield. I told them that I didn't think the board would go forward with a vote on this matter tonight, so I don't think they're in the audience. If they are, I apologize, I don't see anybody there. But the, simply put, they propose that they would like to submit for their Phase Two, which is immediately adjacent to the existing property, if they can get approval from the state and funding and, and, and. One of their first conditions is, and we want the city to approve it right now, and agree to rezone, and I don't think that the board can do that. You don't have a plan in front of you, you don't have any of the details, I just don't think you can do that, and in discussing that with their counsel, they pretty much acknowledged that, yes, that was not something that the, that the board could do at this point. So it really comes down to, they're proposing, they want time to try and propose for their Phase Two, and if they don't get that, they want, they will agree to construct the road, but they'd like the city to pay half the cost. They estimate that it's thirty-five thousand dollars to finish building the road. They'd like the city to agree to pay seventeen thousand five hundred. In my discussions with them, and you'll see in their letter, they did detail on the first page where they talk about their project costs and what they attribute as additional costs attributable to the city. I specifically asked them on multiple occasions, do you have any backup information for that? Do you have any documents to show these increased costs? And I now have it in writing that the answer to that question is no. There is nothing in writing that they can demonstrate to show the delay costs or the increased costs. They did send me their estimates for the construction of the road and the cost savings where they got the thirty-five thousand and where they, you know, where they got those estimates, but as for the actual cost incurred allegedly due to the city, there isn't any backup for that. I'm not suggesting one way or another that they did or didn't incur those costs, I just, I knew the board would want to know, do we have anything we can put our hands on, and the answer to that is no. So it really comes down to three things, would we agree to continue to support the rezoning? I don't. I don't know that you can do that at this point, but you're the Board of Alderman, you can, you make the rules, so you can decide. Secondly, would you be willing to give them time to construct the road? They've asked for three years. I don't know that there's magic to the three years, but would you be willing to give them time to do it? Would you be willing to pay some of the cost if they don't? And then, lastly, the, the number three under the options is really my suggestion. We require developers, particularly when they're doing infrastructure, to post a bond all the time, to ensure that it gets done. And if we go down the road of, okay, we'll give you time to do this, we'll give you an opportunity to submit your proposal for Phase Two, would the Board be interested in getting a bond now? Thirty-five thousand dollars is not a lot of money, so maybe it's not a lot of risk. On the flip side, a bond for thirty-five thousand dollars might be a thousand dollars, maybe? I mean, it's just not a big number to have to bond over. So, those were just three options, and my goal would be, for tonight, is if I could get some feedback from the Board on what you might be willing to talk about with them, so I can give them some information, because when I told them, thank you for your letter, but it's still on the agenda, they were immediately ringing by phone with, hey, well, hey, we sent you a proposal, if you don't like it, what would you like? So clearly, this is not their last offer, and, and I don't think it's their best offer, but before we foreclose the opportunity to resolve it, uh, I wanted to bring it back to the Board to get some feedback on what things might you be willing to do?
Are we open for discussion? So do we need to vote to table this?
Well, I...
Should we discuss?
You can do it either way. I mean, as long as it's, it's on the agenda, so you can do it, you can table it now and discuss, or table...
Well, let's just have, we'll discuss first.
Alderman Reese. Personally, I'd like to, I'd like to table it, because there's information that we need to get, other than what's presented here, and we'll be able to discuss it amongst ourselves, because, you know, Alderman Davidson might have an issue that he thinks of, and Miller might have one that he thinks of, but I just think that we need the time to really look over this, and probably, plus Steve's a little bit too.
So you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Well...
All right, we'll go ahead, we'll do that. We'll go ahead and, and make the, we'll go ahead and propose to table the, uh, Council Bill forty-seven, and then we'll have discussion and help give Steve some direction on where we want to go with this. So, I have a motion to table Council Bill forty-seven, and a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of tabling that?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so Council Bill forty-seven will be tabled. Now, uh, let's open it up for discussion on the information that Steve has brought to us, um, and some, give him some direction on where to go with this. Alderman Milner?
I'd like to, um, remind everybody that when we, um, passed, but didn't actually pass the last time, the reasoning behind the fact that they did not finish their road was pretty overrun, and now it becomes very obvious that there is no evidence of the city being the one causing their overruns. So I want, I want to remind you all of that, because this was a hard-fought battle, and our codes and our specifications for developers are very strict, and they are very intent to make sure that the project that they bring forth to us is a project that they finish. And personally, they did not finish their project, and they got leniency to do that by this past Board. So no, their road needed to be finished, they blamed it on the city that they went into overruns, which they cannot provide us any information that we caused them, and when they asked for, um, a new...
Codes guy.
Codes guy, we gave it to them immediately, of which we ended up paying for, by the way. We weren't supposed to pay them, the whole thing, we were supposed to be splitting that cost. I don't believe we did, if I remember correctly. So number one, we paid out for something we shouldn't have had to pay for to begin with, and number two, they did not file, or they did not file our specific guidelines and the guidelines that were set forth to them with our building codes. They were to finish this street, and they did not, and they blamed the city for the reason why, but they cannot prove to us that they did.
So do you... So do you have, um, an opinion on either extending their construction time, or requiring them to post a bond or something, the questions that Steve had asked for?
My personal thought on this is, they need to kind of finish the road. Period. I don't believe it needs to be a three-year period of time. If they are talking about a Phase Three, that sounds like they're just wanting to push it off to me. I say they need, before we would consider, in my personal opinion, I think if, um, we were to consider their Phase Two, they need to finish their road first. That's my personal opinion.
Alderman Dickerson? Alderman Dickerson? Alderman Dickerson, I'm recognizing you.
She's right, but there is proof that this, that we did delay, because we had to hire a codes man to finish the job.
That's not what we're discussing right now, that was...
No, no, she's, you're talking about proof of us, of what he's asking. There wasn't anything in writing, but that is the proof, that we had to hire someone to come in and to finish, because the codes guy that was there was not doing his job, and he was having, he was having problems with her supervisor. They were both arguing.
Okay, Alderman, let's stay, let's, let's stay on topic. We don't have to go back and rehash that. We're talking about how to provide direction to resolve this.
Well...
So...
I don't know, I want to read what they wrote first, but that, that's the point of the money that they're claiming their house.
Well, they couldn't generate any proof of that, so...
Well, I...
It's, it's hearsay at this point. Uh, anybody else? Alderman Davidson?
Well, them attending the meeting and bringing, and bringing information that it was going to cause the rent to go up aggravates me concern. Uh, I think it increased, it increased the, um, uh, those that live out there, um, some heartache, and some concern, and we determined that was not accurate as well. I wasn't hearing when it happened, um, but at this point in time, without looking anymore, I don't, um, I'm not in favor of any of the terms whatsoever. They need to finish the road. I don't want to set precedent for future construction. That's probably my biggest issue, uh, is setting precedent, and unless they can provide something that we should help construct, I'm not in on this.
Oh, other opinions? Alderman Dorhoff, what do you think?
I still can't get past the fact that it never truly passed the first time around. It was due to, uh, lack of, you know, the counsel that we had before, saying that, uh, that it did pass, but it never passed. But I'm not opposed to having them post a bond, so we have, the city has somehow a guarantee that it will get done, and whether we give them a year, or what's, what's reasonable, uh, I'm not opposed to doing that, just so that the city's protected.
Alderman Miller, coming?
I think this whole thing's unfortunate. There was a series of events that appeared to me that led up to this. Number one, when they asked for the variances, I think our current code man at that time made a mistake while even presenting it to planning and zoning to consider, and then another mistake was made when planning and zoning recommended it, and it came to us when there was an already platted, accepted design. And, so I think there was mistakes on both sides, and I think we owe them some time to try to resolve this and get Phase Two in here. So I would like to, to give them twelve or eighteen months and see if we can get this resolved. That's to the benefit of everybody in Harrisonville. I mean, they, they claimed when they were here the last time that they had a waiting list of close to three hundred people on apartments, so if that's true, you know, Phase Two would be a real plus to Harrisonville and its seniors, so my thoughts are, let's, let's try to work with them for a little while and give them an opportunity, but the bottom line is, the street's got to be completed, one way or another, but I would rather try to work with them and, and get the entire Phase Two done, so it benefits everybody.
Alderman Turner?
Well, kind of like Alderman Miller, I mean, this was two years ago, right around, when it passed, like, they, they came to ask for a variance, and they were told they got it. I mean, whether we cost them money, they cost us money, oh, it's, all right, it's, they were told it passed, they were told that they had to finish it, and that was it. We brought it back up to make it right on the books, to make it legit. It's not their fault, as if we didn't do it correctly, that's on us, but to go back and, and take our word back, to redo it to business, that it's already come here and potentially wanting to do more, doesn't say good on the city. I mean, that's just, that's my point.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
This is economic development, and that seems to be what this Board is focused on, and that's what this is, is economic development, and if we mess that up, that is going to translate into other people wanting to come here and build it already have, from our discussions before, and I think, I think we should work with these people.
Okay.
I don't have a point of problem with who want to split the road cost.
So I'm hearing, um, a lot of discussion and a lot of the points that Steve has mentioned. How about this? We all have agreed, I think, that we want the road completed. I think we all have agreed that we don't want the city to be in any jeopardy in the future with future developers. Am I, am I understanding you correctly? Okay. I do want to step back and say that, that the original issue with, and with the bill being declared an ordinance when it was not an ordinance, was not the fault of the Board. The issue was erroneous legal advice that the Board took action on, and because the city has some culpability in having done that, is why we're wanting to correct this now. So I think that, um, what I would propose that the Board consider, so that we get the road built, that we work with this developer, and that we don't jeopardize the city, let's propose that, um, Attorney Mauer go back to the developer and their legal counsel, and request either a letter of credit, or a bond, or something in the amount of what it would cost the city if we have to put in the road. That way, we're not jeopardizing the city, we're not costing the taxpayers any additional money, and we're protecting the city from future culpability with future developers that want to come and want an exception to their original plan. I'm not sure that thirty-five thousand dollars would build a road. I'm in favor of granting them some additional time, but because they haven't been able to provide any written proof of their alleged cost overruns, I feel like we should require them to show us something in good faith, and for me, that's a letter of credit or a bond, in the amount of what it would cost us if we have to go out and put that road in. I just don't want it to cost the city or our citizens money. So, that would be what I would propose. Would that be something that would be agreeable to the Board? Grant them some time, grant them two years if you wish, but ask them to do something in good faith, to show us, to give us something in good faith, so that if they don't get approval from the Missouri Housing Corporation, that we still get the road, and our citizens don't have to pay for it.
I guess my only question back to that would be, we need to make sure that if we allow this timeframe to go, um, just to cover Mr., um, Wilburn, Wilburn, if by chance he would get an opportunity to sell his parcel of land to someone else prior to them making their decision on whether they're moving forward or not, we need to make sure we don't, that we have what we need to make sure that they finish that road, in case he doesn't sell them that property, he sells it to someone else. We need to, we make, we need to make, uh, we need to make sure that they have to finish the road.
That's a good point. Does the Board understand what Alderman Milner is proposing?
That makes, I mean, that, kind of, if that makes sense, because if he gets an opportunity to sell that before they get their work done, he will do it.
Correct.
So we need to make sure that they are held accountable for their road.
Counselor, got it?
That's what I meant.
Okay. What do you think, Board?
Yeah, and I agree with what you had to say, as long as we do get that bond, because frankly, I do not have a lot of faith in the people that represent that organization. I sat there, and that lady was out there, and there were about ten or twelve people out there that were terrified that we were going to do something that was going to make them raise their rents, and they couldn't do that, and that lady knew they couldn't do that, and still she said it. And so, you know, I, I agree, I'd like to see them have a look, I'd like to be able to work with them, but I want some insurance that says they will do what they have to do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Board.
All right, um, item H, reporter of the investigation committee. Alderman Davidson?
Everybody's there?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, I just handed out, uh, some information. I would like it, it in its entirety back, um, but I am going to read a, uh, some information regarding the investigation, and then I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. At the October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, regular reading of the Harrisonville Board of Alderman, a motion was made, seconded, and carried by a vote of five to two to request Mayor Bowman to appoint an investigative committee into the absences of Harrisonville Board of Alderman's regular meetings by Alderman Brad Baklman. The discipline standards of Alderman, Section one-ten, one-zero, set, one-seven-zero, subsection A-nine of the Harrisonville City Ordinance Estate, A, causes for disciplinary actions, number nine, failure to attend four consecutive regular Board meetings, or six regular meetings within a twelve-month period, when considering whether to take action, the Board may consider an explanation, or if the absence was excused, uh, example, medical or family emergencies. That will be, that ordinance is, um, shown as attachment A to your information. Mayor Bowman, Bowman then appointed Alderman Marcie Milner, Alderman Matt Turner, myself, to the investigative committee, which was to consist of three Board members. This appointment of Board members was appointed by a roll-call vote, um, and approved by a roll-call vote of six to one. Additionally, I was nominated and elected the Chair of the Investigative Committee, and to ultimately report back to the full Board. Due to a question raised in the process of the appointment of the three Board members to the investigative committee, and the selection of the Chair, Mayor Bowman conducted a process, the process again at the next Harrisonville Board of Alderman meeting, which was a special meeting held on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. The appointments were approved and carried in the same result as at the October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting. As of that date, a request to appoint an investigative committee on October twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, Alderman Baklman had missed a total of seven regular Board of Alderman meetings within a twelve-month period, and a total of four consecutive Board Alderman meetings, meeting the threshold for potential discipline. meeting the threshold for potential discipline. Additionally, as of that same day, Alderman Bauchaman had missed in excess of 25 regular executive session and special meetings, all occurring since May 1st, 2019. On October 23rd, 2019, Harrisonville City Attorney Steve Mauer sent a letter via Federal Express with receipt, signature required, to Alderman Bauchaman at his home address. That letter is exhibit two in your packet. The content of the letter was approved by the investigative committee and required a response to Attorney Mauer by November 1st, 2019, at 5:00 p.m. The letter was received at his residence by signature on October 24th, 2019. The later state, the letter stated, and I quote, "A committee would need to investigate the claim of absences, including meeting with you to discuss the allegations, if you are so inclined." It continued by stating, I quote, "I need to hear from you by November 1st, so that I can advise the city of your intent in the meeting with the committee to discuss the violations," end quote. A response to this October 23rd, 2019, letter was received at the Harrisonville City Hall front office via an unsealed letter on October 30th, 2019. That unsealed letter is exhibit three in your packet. The response was a one-sentence response with Alderman Bauchaman's reason for not attending the meetings. I might note at this point in time, for the protection of Alderman Bauchaman's privacy, no discussion will occur in open session as to the reason given for his absences. On October 31st, 2019, a special meeting of the investigative committee was convened at the Harrisonville City Hall, with Alderman Davidson, Milner, and Turner present, being chaired by myself, and with Harrisonville City Attorneys Mauer and Christine Rodo being telephoned. Minutes of this meeting are attached as exhibit four in your packet. The investigative committee discussed Alderman Bauchaman's response to his absences, receipts of payroll by Alderman Bauchaman, and a review of a draft of a follow-up letter to be sent to Alderman Bauchaman. The letter requested additional and more detail and specific information to his October 30th, 2019, letter of response. The draft of the letter approved by the, was approved by the investigative committee, and was sent to Alderman Bauchaman on October 31st, 2019, and was signed by all three investigative committee members. The letter was sent via Federal Express with receipt signature required to Alderman Bauchaman's home residence, and requested Alderman Bauchaman's to please, quote, "As I, please provide this information in a sealed envelope to City Hall to the attention of Mike Tholen by Friday, November 15th, 2019, at 5:00 p.m." That letter is exhibit five in your packet. The letter was received at his residence by signature on November 1st, 2019. A response to this October 31st, 2019, letter was received at the Harrisonville City Hall front office via an unsealed letter after the deadline of the response on November 21st, 2019. That letter is exhibit six in your packet. This response was received six days late, and again, was in one sentence and length, and failed to respond to the answer, and has failed to respond or answer the questions posed by the investigative committee. On November 25th, 2019, a second special meeting in the investigative committee was convened at the Harrisonville City Hall, with Alderman Davidson, Milner, and Turner present, with City Hall, or with City Attorney Mauer also present, to answer any legal questions and take notes at the meeting. The draft of the attachments are attached to your packet in exhibit seven. A review of all the information and documentation was conducted by the investigative committee. After discussion, a vote was taken on whether to present a motion to the full board on whether to exonerate or to charge Alderman Bauchaman. The vote was unanimous three to zero, to recommend to the full board to charge Alderman Bauchaman for violating the disciplines of standards for Alderman, Section 110.170, subsection A9 of the Harrisonville City Ordinance. To date, as of tonight, Alderman Bauchaman has now missed, including tonight's meeting, a total of nine, excuse me, 10 regular board of Alderman meetings within a 12-month period, and a total of seven consecutive board of Board of Alderman meetings, meeting the threshold for potential discipline, keeping in mind that threshold was six in a 12-month period and four in a row. Additionally, Alderman Bauchaman has missed close to 40 regular executive session and special meetings, all since May 1st, 2019. That is exhibit eight in your packet. Alderman Bauchaman has failed to provide representation to Harrisonville Board One constituents for almost all of the previous seven months, beginning May 1. Furthermore, Alderman Bauchaman failed to provide requested information, which could have been used to determine his discipline. Therefore, at the unanimous recommendation of the investigative committee, I make a motion to the full board of the Harrisonville Board of Alderman to charge Alderman Bauchaman for violation of Section 110.170, subsection A9 of the Harrisonville City Ordinance, and to move forward with disciplinary process.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you to members of the investigative committee. I have a motion to move forward with charging Alderman Brad Bauchaman for violation of city code as it pertains to attendance at meetings.
Second, though.
I have a second from Alderman Dorhoff. May I have roll call, please?
Hey, Mayor.
Sir?
I do want to point out that, I mean, this is only regular meetings. The executive and special and all that don't pertain, so it's irrelevant how many he misses those.
I think, well, to answer your question, the ordinance specifically states the four and six, okay? I understand that.
Right.
But, but the constituents that he represents
Correct.
Failed to be represented during those 40, almost 40 meetings. So, therefore, it doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance, but it needs to be pointed out that he has missed, actually, I think I counted up, 39 meetings since May 1.
Right.
And that needs to be pointed out, because the constituents are the ones that are not being addressed here.
Correct. But, the motion and the ordinance is for the general.
Absolutely.
So, I have a motion and a second, that we move forward with charging Alderman Bauchaman according to city code for violation of attendance policies for an Alderman. I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Can I have a question, please?
Yes, Alderman.
This is strictly for attendance at this point, correct?
That's correct. Is that correct, Alderman Davidson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Now, I'll take the roll call. Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Miller? Thank you. That motion carries. Do you want to proceed?
And the next thing that would happen is the, since the board has voted to charge under our ordinance, then we need to select a time and date for a hearing, and then I will provide notice to Alderman Bauchaman of that time and date, but that's pursuant to our code. The next time would be December 16th, would be the meeting, and I don't know how long this might take, but if we're going to meet at 7:00, perhaps we could do it at 6:00 o'clock on December 16th. That would give time for us to get the notice to Alderman Bauchaman, and at that hearing, assuming that there's, that there's any testimony by Alderman Bauchaman, then the board would consider it and make a decision. If not, if they're guilty, guilty plea or note, then the board would move straight into the discipline decision.
Can I ask a question? Is that meeting in closed session or?
It will be in closed session, yes.
Please.
I just want to make sure that the meeting and the hearing would be in closed.
Yes.
However, the vote would be in open, correct?
Correct.
Alderman Turner?
Which vote is in open?
So, Attorney Mauer, would you repeat what you just said before?
Sure. The here, according to our code, the hearing is to be in closed session with witnesses, but then if there is a vote to, to impose, the vote to impose discipline, whatever that would be, the, would be the disciplinary phase, and that would be in public.
Okay, but, but the vote before the disciplinary would be in private or?
You can vote in private to be, whether it's guilty or innocent.
Okay.
But the vote to be what discipline, if there is discipline imposed, what it's going to be, would be in public.
Okay. Now, I have another question. On the attendance records, okay, if he doesn't, it says he doesn't miss, he didn't miss all those meetings in a row. He was here, and had, maybe he missed two or three, and then came back.
Alderman Davidson, do you want to address that?
So, I mean, that starts the clock back on the consecutive meetings.
I'm wrong in consecutive.
Yeah, you're just telling the totals that he missed of the whole year. He didn't miss all those meetings.
No, I, I told both.
Yeah.
He's missed since May 1, but I'm going to give him the benefit of that going back to December 1st of last year. He has missed a total of 10 tonight, as of today. He has missed a total of, to make sure I've got my numbers there, he's missed a total of 10.
It gets all of that.
Okay. But he's missed a total of seven in a row.
Yeah, that's, that's the recent count, right?
I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, he didn't miss any in a row before that.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, there's, it's either or, so you can miss, it's either more than six in a 12-month period, or four in a row, and he meets both thresholds, that's more than four in a row, and more than six in a 12-month period. So, that's, I mean, when you say start over.
Well, if he missed four, and then you came to a meeting.
Correct.
Then that cancels the four out, and then you start over and you have to count it.
Yeah. Well, if he missed four in a row, he would have met the threshold.
I have read the.
But he never did.
Yeah.
He never did get to have four in a row, so, I mean, that's, that's viewed.
Yeah.
But when you start, when you did miss.
I have read the ordinance to know exactly how many. Well, I know it's in here, I want, I've got to read all this stuff.
That's okay.
I will.
A reminder, you'll need to turn that packet back in to Alderman Davidson before you leave this evening. Is there any other discussion?
Can I read it?
Write your number down, and then you can look it up.
Uh-huh.
Matt's got it on his phone.
You can.
Matt's got him on his phone.
We can, okay. I can print you out.
I can, I can, yeah, we can print you out, copy the code. You can keep exhibit A if you want to, that's totally fine, that's the code, okay? And if you want my statement from tonight, I'll be more than happy to present, because all of it.
I just, I want to be able to read all this stuff. I understand about the meetings, I don't think that, but I just wanted to read what you've got there.
So, you want my presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that have to refer from there?
No, I have not, I don't have any copy of that, so I will give that presentation.
Yeah, whatever.
And Alderman Davidson, I would point out to you that the rest of the records that are here, a lot of these are actually copies of the minutes
Yeah, I understand.
Which show his absence, okay? And those are available to you online. All right, moving on to Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Turner?
Actually, wait, wait. I'm sorry. We need, we need to set the date for the hearing under our code, and what I recommended was December 16th at 6:00, so that we can have that hearing, and I can provide the notice to Alderman Bauchaman.
Do we need a motion, Ben? I think a motion that we have the hearing at 6:00 before the regular scheduled meetings on December 16th.
Okay, I have a motion to set the date of the hearing for December 16th at 6:00 p.m. May I have a second, please?
Second.
And a second from Alderman Davidson. Let's have a roll call, please. Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes, so we'll schedule the hearing for December 16th at 6:00 p.m.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could I, while you go on through, can I go back and pick up all the information?
Certainly, absolutely. Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Turner?
Appreciate it.
Alderman Dickerson?
No, I have nothing.
Alderman Miller?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Yes, I have two comments. One, I think the citizens of the Board of Alderman deserve to be represented by two people that were elected. And second thing is, I want to commend forged by fire for their generosity that they presented on Thanksgiving Day by having first responders come and get free meals on Thanksgiving, if they weren't able to have them at home. So, I think that's all what the community means, and it's nice to see that in our city.
Thank you. Alderman Milner?
I do have a couple things. First and foremost, I just want to commend and thank the members of this board for last Monday's meeting. I felt like we had such a productive meeting. Everybody had opinions, there was no my side, your side. We were a united group that agreed on things we didn't all want to give, but we all gave and took, and came to unanimous decisions. I want to commend Alderman Miller for all the work he did, and the facts that he presented to us as a board, and staff, because you all, you know, you all, he, everybody kept asking you more and more and more questions, and you gave everybody the answers. I felt like, not speaking for Alderman Miller, but I felt like he got the answers that he was looking for, and was able to.
Did a lot of homework.
Yeah. And, and he did a lot of homework, and it sure, I think it helped all of us to come to those conclusions. But again, I want to thank this board for being a united board for a change. It's such a breath of fresh air. Secondly, this weekend, on Saturday, I know Mayor will probably touch on this here in just a few minutes, is Mayor's Christmas tree lighting, and it's also the Bright Futures Holiday Store. Will be on Saturday, 2 to 4, at the middle school. Anyone would love to volunteer, we would certainly love to have you. We take kids, any child within our area who wants to come in and shop for their family, can shop for a quarter, and buy everybody in their family a gift. We will have personal shoppers from the kids from the high school will come over and help them to shop. The parents have to stay outside, the kiddos come inside with us and shop. We will wrap their gifts and send them out in a bag, so that on Christmas morning, they have gifts to give their entire family. So, if you have a couple of hours, you want to donate some time, we would love to have you. We need all the hands on deck that we can get, because if you haven't ever seen it, it is very controlled chaos, but we have a ball. So, please feel free to come.
Thank you. Alderman Reese?
I think we accomplished a lot, and I too spoke with the, talked to Clint after the meeting, or via text, so I appreciate that. Also, we are coming up on the holidays, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but I think the 14th, the Shop With A Cop, is that great? And it is a, if you've never seen it, I've had the opportunity to experience it. It's amazing to watch these kids go to Walmart and shop, have a hundred dollars to spend, probably a hundred dollars they've never had before. And the way they spend the money, I've got to get something for my sister, I've got to get something for my brother, my mom, and my dad, before they think of themselves. So, to be, been a part of that for many, many years, with different organizations, but also with Harrisonville. So, if you have the opportunity to provide funds to Harrisonville, they're always looking, Harrisonville TV, for Shop With A Cop. They're always looking for funds, because they will find it one way or another to provide a hundred dollars to every kid that needs it. So, that would be something that if you're looking for someone to donate, or something to donate during the holidays, that would be a good and worthwhile cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I would echo several comments that were made up here. We do have Shop With A Cop on Saturday, the 14th. I've been involved with that now ever since Chief Hofer brought it to Harrisonville, and it is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to share what we have with a lot of children who don't have anything. If you ever thought about a child who's never had something new, or if you ever thought about a child who was excited to have a bag of Funyuns, that little salty snack, because he's never had it before, those are the kind of things that you experience with Shop With A Cop. So, I know Chief Hofer is standing there, and I don't know if he wants to say anything, or he wants to, you want to say anything to this group about Shop With A Cop?
I'd rather just go home, but.
[laughter]
It'll be, I can talk all night. Shop With A Cop, 14th, we have donated 99 kids as of this afternoon funded. We shoot for 150 each year. We provide entertainment for their family, for their parents, so that we give them. We provide entertainment for their family, for their parents, so that we get one-on-one with the child ourselves. We're a little short. We've got some things working. Sonic, we posted today, Sonic bought two large TVs, four bikes, and a little motorized car that they're selling raffle tickets for, so we're going to have SWAC Day down at Sonic this Saturday, have some officers down there. Mazzio's, I know has been working for tips, and I think they've got about two grand for us, so I think we're going to hit our one-fifty. Last year, we hit one-seventy-two, so one of the larger ones in the area, we're making it up at four.
So the raffle tickets will be sold at Sonic on Saturday? Is that what she said?
I think they're selling them already.
Oh, they are? Okay.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman. Answer any questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. And then to piggyback what Alderman Milner said about Christmas on the square this weekend, there's a lot of really fun family activities happening. The children's store to shop for Christmas packages, a children's pageant, caroling on the steps of the courthouse, that was a new addition last year. It was just delightful to hear Christmas carols being sung. We'll light the Mayor's Christmas tree just to kick off the Mayor's Christmas tree fund. I've already talked about that this evening, so I won't address that any longer. I want to thank Alderman Miller as well for the leadership that he brought to this board in discussing the proposed utility rates. You know, we've talked before about sometimes decisions are difficult to make, but when we study the facts and talk about them, we usually come to the right decision. So I want to commend the board for the discussion and again commend Alderman Clint Miller for the leadership that he brought to that. So that being said, I would move to reports from the city administrator, Mr. Tholen.
Thank you, Mayor. I too'd like to thank the board for their work on the city budget and all the parts that go into it. The staff is charged with making recommendations and bringing a proposed budget to you, and from our standpoint, that's difficult enough, and we're dealing with more desires than there is realistic revenue to support, and so you're making some balancing, juggling, and that kind of stuff, but we know that the ultimate responsibility for the decision rests with the elected officials, and you have to make some difficult choices. And if it were easy, it would have been easy, but, you know, as you demonstrated, it takes a good amount of work, and we are very appreciative of that from the staff level. We do thank you for that. Speaking of staff, Marcela McCoy, our finance director, who's been very instrumental in working on the budget and all the documents of that this year and other years as well, will be leaving us and taking a similar position, albeit probably in a bigger city, closer to home, and probably more money and all those kind of good things. Shorter commute. She'll be going to the city of Warrensburg, so we're going to miss her and we wish her well, and will be advertising to fill that position and going through that process, so just when you get something finished, you got to start something else. But thank you, Marcela.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the media?
Something Alderman Milner said earlier about the 2% increase. You said 2021, but then you said 2020. Is it going to be in 2020 or 2021?
The 2% will be in 2021.
Okay.
The 98 cent per month on residential is 2020, and then 2021 will be an additional 2% on all of them.
And then on the sewer, it's in 2021, it's a 3% increase?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Brian. I still can't see you, but I know you're back there. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, a second.
A motion for Alderman Dickerson with a second for Alderman Turner to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Good night.